Welcome to the September 27, 2007, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. George, you want to lead this?
Right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion? So move. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Item on consent, does anybody wish to pull it? Seeing none, I'll read it into the record. Planet Pet, request for administrative permit use approved. Approval for a veterinary clinic in a commercial plaza. Dr. Melissa Mueller, owner, Milton Construction, Inc., agent, located at 2190 45th Street, zoning classification CG, general commercial, land use designation CI, commercial industrial. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Who was that, Zoe?
That was me.
Sorry, George.
Second.
Greg.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passage unanimously. Items not on consent, and this is being brought back from our last meeting. Sandridge on the Green, reconsidered from September 13, 2007 meeting. Request for preliminary plat approval of a 58-lot conventional single-family subdivision to be known as Sandridge on the Green. EDC, Inc., owner WF McKean and Associates, agent, located at 5010 69th Street, zoning classification RS6, single-family residential up to six units per acre. Land use designation L2, low-density residential up to six units per acre. And the density on the overall project is 2.96 units per acre. And we have a couple of quasi-judicial items, so anybody that wishes to speak on the matter needs to be sworn in.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, who's doing this? Sorry, I'm... Steve?
Round two.
If you want to abbreviate this presentation and just go right to the chase, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Bruce. My name is Stephen Dareduff with Indian River County Community Development Department. As you stated, this is Sandridge on the Green. I'll go to the landscape design first. There's a proposed 15-foot, all-native vegetation buffer on the east, west, and north sides. And on 69th Street, there's a Type B buffer with a six-foot opaque feature. Upland preservation tracks, there's two of them, one located in the northwest corner and one in the southwest corner. These are both required because the site has 7.7 acres of upland. Here's an aerial of the site showing what the vegetation, and you can see on the west half of the site is predominantly wooded. There are some, they're predominantly, I'm sorry, slash pines. There are some hardwoods in the area. The right side of the, or the east side of the site was a former grove. The area that I've highlighted there on the screen is the area that contains the hardwoods and palms. The trees you see dotted with red dots are all oak trees. There are six of them, and they are proposed to be moved or saved in their current locations. The trees that may require mitigation, I have marked with X's. These trees are either very large or not healthy at all. As far as the traffic concerns that were in the last presentation, staff has corrected that. In the last presentation, you had an old traffic study and was inadvertently inserted into the traffic study section, and the new traffic study has been added. Is there any questions? Thank you. Any questions to staff?
No, I appreciate the tree survey. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Normally, on items not on consent, we ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak. Does anybody wish to speak? Please state your name and address for the record.
Chris Pontalo, WF McKean and Associates, 1171 19th Street, Vero Beach. We're the engineers for the project. I'm here on behalf of the applicant and like to answer any questions that you might have. If you need any further explanation of the vegetation, I did go out and walk the site again. That western half of the site was actually part of the grove. The citrus trees out there are either dead or dying, and some other vegetation has come up. Like Steve said, there's some slash pines. There's oaks around the existing residence that he's pointed out to you, and quite a bit of Brazilian pepper that'll be removed. And other than that, it's just mostly undergrowth.
Thank you. Do I have a motion, or does anybody else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion on this?
I move to adopt as presented. I surveyed it this afternoon from the golf course side.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passage unanimously.
The tree study was very nice to add in there, though.
Next item up is also quasi-judicial. Verizon 68818 at the moorings. Request for administrative permit use approval to construct a stealth wireless communications tower at the moorings club. SBA Networks Services, Inc., agent, located at 100 Harbor Drive, zoning classification RS6, three, single-family residential up to three units per acre. Land use designation L1, low-density, one, up to three units per acre. And, I'm sorry. Brian, is Brian going to do this?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Bruce. I am Brian Freeman, Indian River County Senior Planner. This is an application by SBA Networks on behalf of Verizon Wireless to construct a 100-foot-tall stealth wireless communications facility, and the tower has been designed to have the appearance of a flagpole. The tower has also been designed to accommodate a minimum of three users. That would include Verizon and two additional users. And also, the applicant has submitted a technical justification for the tower, which has been reviewed and accepted by the county's telecommunications manager. This is a view of the zoning map in the area around the tower, and as you can see, this part of the barrier island is all zoned RS3, single-family residential. And this is an aerial view of the tower site and the vicinity. And as you can see, the site is located right at the northern edge of the moorings, which includes a recreational facility that includes a clubhouse, golf course, tennis courts, and other recreational uses. And also, just to the north is the south campus of the St. Edward's School. Besides those two uses, this area of the barrier island is predominantly single-family residential. And this is a closer view of the tower site. As you can see, the tower is going to be located just to the north of what are existing maintenance buildings for the moorings. And to the south and west of the site are moorings tennis courts. And then to the north of the site are, that is property that is part of St. Edward's School, and as you can see, there are some athletic fields in this area. And then to the east of the site is the driving range for the moorings. And then the water body that you see to the left edge or the west edge of this image is the Indian River Lagoon. This is a view of the site plan for the site, and the actual location of the flagpole is what is highlighted on this image. And as you can see, along the lower edge of this plan is the existing maintenance building. There are two existing live oak trees in the area that is going to be the compound for the tower and its associated equipment. One is an existing live oak, which is to remain, and they will build the tower around this tree. And the second one is an existing oak that is to be relocated. This is a view of the landscape plan for the tower and...
Is it going to be relocated locally on-site?
It's going to be located somewhere in the moorings. I don't think it's going to be located within the tower compound.
It is, I know.
And then as far as the new landscaping for the area development, there'll be some live oak trees, silver buttonwood is understory and viburnum to screen the compound area. The applicant has provided photo simulations from four different angles of the proposed tower, and this is the first of those, which is from the north. And this, actually, what you see in the foreground are the ball fields for St. Edward's. And as you'll also notice, there are some existing light poles around the ball fields. And those light poles, right now, are about the tallest structures in the area and are about 70 feet in height. The second view is actually from Highway A1A, and this is looking west from A1A towards the location. And what you see in the foreground of this image is the driving range for the moorings. And as you can see, there's also the poles and the netting for the driving range. So that's another structure that is also of some height in the area of the proposed tower. And this shot here is from the south, I believe this is from Harbor Drive, within the moorings, looking into the distance to where the tower is to be located. And then the last angle, I guess, is the best that they were able to do from the west without getting on a boat. But this is looking from one of the peninsulas in the moorings that extends out into the lagoon towards the, or from the southwest towards where the tower location is to be Staff has reviewed the application, and based on staff's analysis, staff recommends that the Planning and Zoning Commission grant administrative permit use approval with the following condition, and that condition be that the tower be designed to structurally accommodate at least three users, which would be Verizon plus at least two additional users. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address those.
Anybody have any questions?
You want to do this dance again for me on what's the height of a structure that requires a light? Is it over 100 feet, or is it...
Oh, as far as a wireless communications facility?
Yeah.
The FAA requires anything over 200 feet to be lighted.
200 feet, okay. That's what I was looking for. Thank you. George?
Brian, maybe this is for you or the applicant. Just looking at the pictures, and through the years, I remember there spent two or three times in conversation with St. Ed's about using the light poles around the football field, and I'm just wondering if Verizon pursued that instead of this tower. I didn't know if they, if that had happened, because that was what kind of the general assumption in the area was going to be. There's be a tower, but they may as well use what we've got.
Yeah, that's actually a good question, and Verizon's been looking at this, trying to locate a tower in this area for a number of years. And at one time, I know there was discussions about using a facility, probably modifying or replacing one of the existing light poles. Verizon and the school, I don't think they were able, ever able to work out an agreement on that. And Verizon then went and got this proposal at the moorings club. You know, if, there's obviously multiple telecommunications carriers, and I would think most of them probably would have a need to provide some kind of level of coverage on the barrier island in this area, so...
The reason I ask is that we do have room. They're supposed to make space for three people, and it's a little scary when we have talked about towers enough to even remember anything. But one of the things I remember is that the guy on top has best reception, the number two guy has second-best reception, number three guy is usually third in line. This tower's 100 feet, the lights poles, I don't know what the light poles are where at St. Ed's, but they're relatively 70 feet. Usually, in an area like that with three people, if they need it, you'd go to 110 or 120 or 130. Now, we don't want to get a monopole that high, and that's why I was wondering about the ability to use some of the structure in that area, which would probably give better coverage if you're going to have the additional competitors on the tower. Now, maybe Verizon isn't interested in that, but it was, that's the only thing I can see of question here. I mean, there's no, the tower's certainly not sticking out like a sore thumb and whatnot. So I, but that was, I was just kind of curious where the history of this had started and ended.
In staff's discussions, we think it's possible in the long term that this particular stealth facility and also a stealth facility at St. Ed's with the lights is a possibility. But, in other words, having both. In this area, as well as some other areas, we think that the 100-foot range, if you look at photo simulations, can work, we think visually, in this area. But we wouldn't want to see something on the order of 130, 120. It really does actually start to get out of scale, so we think it's possible you could wind up with both.
I just, with the crossovers and the interference, I wasn't sure how that worked. But that was really the main question I had.
All right, Brian, what is the size of the one at Sea Oaks?
Yes, Chairman Bruce, the tower that was built at Sea Oaks earlier this year was 85 feet in height.
85, so this is 15 feet higher, okay.
100 is not a very tall tower.
Was there any, were there any objections from St. Ed's?
No, I think they are interested in preserving their interest in a potential tower on their site in the future, but there's no objections that they've expressed us on this particular location.
Any other questions? This item also is not on consent. Traditionally, we ask the public to comment. Does anybody from the public wish to comment? And have you been sworn in?
No. You're from St. Ed's. That's from St. Ed's.
Okay.
You're about St. Ed's.
My name is Frank Spitzmuller. I'm the Chief Advancement Officer over at St. Edward's School, and I thought I would just, I wasn't going to say anything, but I thought I'd just address the issue.
Have you been sworn in?
I have not.
Okay, we need to swear you're in. And anybody else?
Right hand, please.
Anybody else that wishes to speak also?
Okay. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
In response to what Mr. Hamner was saying, St. Edward's still is interested in pursuing the possibility of a tower, and we have talked to the county. Unfortunately, we were, and we are still finalizing our funding on it, and I would hope that, simply, that whatever you do in regard to this application would not preclude the possibility of us using one of our light poles as a subsequent tower. We are interested in doing it. We have contacted certain of the carriers or suppliers, and we think that it could be viable in both places.
If the requirement of the three, which has been normal, this has been, we followed this for now, what, two to three, four years since we've done towers, where we require two or three people on a tower?
Yeah.
Would St. Ed's have to wait for the fourth person? Or would they, if they have an interested party and technically they say they can be, it'll work together? I mean, what is our policy on that?
Yeah, basically, there does need to be justification for another carrier coming in, not on the pole that's before you all tonight. And you're correct, obviously, the lower that you go on that pole, the less coverage you can get.
You've seen a lot of concentric circles, I know that.
That's right. Well, what could occur? We think it's probably likely that two carriers could get some pretty decent coverage with 100-foot height. I would be surprised if, I would think it would be technically justifiable for another carrier to come in to show that they couldn't go in at, say, 70-foot height, that they would need to be at a taller structure than they could then do at St. Ed's. So I think it would be technically justified is what they'll have to show.
That's the figure.
And it depends on, it will depend on their coverage characteristics.
That was one of the things with the poles that we were talking about way back in the beginning. The higher poles mean less towers, whereas shorter poles mean a lot more, whether it's towers off of lights or whatever. And that was one of the things, when visually, the trade-off, you get a bunch of people on one tower, or you spread them out, and they're much shorter. And so the height does become a problem. But I just was curious as to what we would do in light of their question.
And this is, again, this is like Brian was saying, this is a very good area on the South Bear Island for really two installations ultimately, because it's such, they're both kind of large campus settings, they're not near any residential structures, and so visually it fits. It'll just be technical justification in St. Ed's case.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Also, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Jan Alota. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Holland and Knight with offices at 1 East Bard Boulevard, Suite 1300, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, here on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And staff has very aptly gone through the application and the request, so I certainly am not going to belabor any of those facts again. However, we certainly have several individuals here that can answer questions for you if the board is so inclined. We have Mariko Tolman, who is the RF engineer for Verizon Wireless, as well as Jason Lasky with SBA Networks, who was the agent on this application and has processed it through the county. So if there's any other questions that either I can answer or them, we are certainly here and available.
Thank you.
I would like to know what sort of coverage you would get off of a 70-foot tower? What sort of range can you get off of a 70-foot tower? That would be the St. Ed's Tower.
Certainly.
Just out of curiosity, please.
I'll ask Mariko Tolman, who is with Verizon Wireless, to come up and address that question.
My name is Mariko Tolman. It depends on the different types of morphologies and antenna types that we use, but in this area, the coverage would be reduced from our 100-foot by maybe about a quarter, three-tenths of a mile or so.
That's quite a bit.
It is.
So what would be the range if you're going to get off the 100-foot tower? I'm looking for a rough order of magnitude, not exact, you know. Are you going to reach to the north beach, or are you going to reach?
I don't know exactly where the north beach is, but I believe it's about 1.1 miles, I believe, north.
Okay, one to one and a half miles.
Not quite one and a half.
Okay.
It'd be close to the county line.
Yeah, I was going to say, but it covers the county line. There's a blank spot there. I know that from my, is well-needed. I'm just, I don't see how you're going to get anything on a 70-foot pole. What carrier would want a 70-foot pole? So that's my education. Thank you very much.
They add two, they go up from there, is what I understand.
Yeah. Okay. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do you have any questions up here to have a motion? Move to adopt as presented? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Passage unanimously. Approaching the public hearings, and I'm going to turn the chair over to George Hamner. He's obviously more familiar with both of these topics than I am.
I know these proposals, right?
Thank you. We have two items on public hearings. The first one is consideration of a proposed amendment to the provisions of Title IX Land Development Regulations regarding the prohibition of citrus greening and Caribbean fruit fly host plants. This was requested by the citrus industry due to the new disease that's even more devastating than canker. And it was something that's near and dear to my heart, and if our attorney might want to go over what he's, the research he's done, and then we'll open the public hearing for comment if there's any.
Thank you, Commissioner. What you have before you tonight is consideration of proposed amendments to two provisions of Title IX Land Development Regulations regarding the prohibition of the citrus greening and Caribbean fruit fly host plants. What I've handed to you tonight is sort of an updated memorandum. I'll go over what the two provisions are and I'll explain why I had to do an updated memorandum. That's going to be slightly different than the backup that you received a few days ago. The first change that we're looking to do is regarding Section 913076D24, which is basically in the plat portion of the code. And this section of the code requires certain notices to appear on final plats. These notices act as regulations going forward for whatever's been platted, usually subdivisions. This notice is going to state, "Property owners are prohibited from planting any Caribbean fruit fly and citrus greening host plants as specified hereon and are required to remove the same if any exist: catley guava, common guava, loquat, rose apple, sernan cherry, orange jasmine, and Chinese boxer orange." We have always required a notice similar to this that listed the Caribbean fruit fly host plants. Technically, it is actually not in our code. It is found in selected provisions of the comprehensive land use plan, so we're taking this opportunity to go ahead and actually incorporate it into the code and adding the two citrus greening host plants to the list.
Let me ask you, which document will take precedent?
Well...
The land use or the Title IX?
It's actually going to reflect, for the most part, what the comp plan states, except for the fact that the comp plan doesn't reflect the two citrus greening plants. And we are going to, through the EAR process, we're going to go ahead and add the citrus greening plants in the comp plan.
So you're going to have it in two documents, though?
Which is usually what you want. You want the comp plan to sort of set forth the guidelines, and you want the code to implement what the...
How do you know if you change one that you change the other, though? I've done this a thousand times, too, and there needs to be some mechanism to make sure that one is connected to the other.
Well, and that's sort of the problem. Technically, they're probably, we should probably have incorporated the citrus fruit fly prohibition into the code. It's not there. Language is in the comp plan. This is sort of going to correct the fact that it's not there now. We're adding the language for the citrus greening, and when we go through the EAR process, we'll go ahead and add that language into the...
Hopefully, then, what you're saying is this will bring them together so there won't be a conflict, because Craig's right, if we forget one or the other, you tend to have a problem.
I've done that dance before with the city, and it gets really mixed up legally. It's a nightmare.
No, exactly. And so that's, we are going to make sure that they mirror each other. And I think what I've been, what I've seen so far, ever since this has come up, as far as at least the citrus greening, applicants have been very willing to add this notice onto the plats.
Yeah, it's just a technicality of...
No, it's, and you're correct. It needs, the comp plan is the constitution for growth management, and the code needs to reflect that. And if anything, comp plan's going to trump.
The comp plan is a trump, yeah.
And so, and, but we will go ahead and add the citrus greening language into the comp plan during the EAR process.
Great, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, no, it's, no, you're absolutely correct.
George, I have a question. This is only on new subdivision plats, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there any way to get this on a single-family...
Yeah, remember that dance with the green?
George and I have had a lot of talk, conversation about this. The dilemma is not so much the prevention of planting. We even talked about preventing selling the plants in the county. The hoops get bigger, and so it's like anything, we'll take the first swipe of the pie that we can and get it done, and then maybe back into the other. But it's, the removal of plants from existing homes and subdivisions becomes a very...
Well, no, I was thinking something like, you know, when somebody comes in for a building permit.
Right.
To stamp it.
That may be a, right.
If I could just comment on that, two things. The proposal addresses final plats and then any type of development that requires landscaping. And these types of species aren't the kind that we would see. And we have the two-tree requirement with single-family homes, but we don't review, we don't have a landscape plan that gets down to shrubs and that sort of thing for single-family homes, so we won't, we wouldn't have a way to address that. One other point that George has made, both the attorney's office and planning staff, since the board of county commissioners directed these changes, we've asked people to, you know, whenever we've seen them on landscape plans, to remove them. They've been added to plat notes. So far, we've had 100% voluntary compliance out there, so we don't anticipate any problems. And the only other thing is, when we do get to the comp plan policy, we probably want to make sure that that's fairly general and not get into species or some other diseases that could crop up, and we need to take some quicker action. But we need to have a policy that sets the groundwork for that. But we do need to get the species in the LDR, so it's good to spell out all the specifics we can with this. But we may have to, there may be something else, and there may be some other host plants that we find out about later. We need to just be able to act quickly on that if it happens. That's all I had.
Is that it, George?
Yeah, well, that's the first regulation. We're proposing a second regulation, which, and this is where it's going to differ from your previous backup. We're going to add a list of prohibited plantings from any required landscape areas. Originally, this was going to be put in Section 926.06. After revisiting the issue very recently, it's been discussed that it's probably better put in 926.05. put in 926.05 under general requirements for landscaping. And the idea is to create subsection six, which is just going to go ahead and, and for anyone that's got to have a required buffer or landscape, it's going to, the plants are going to be added to that list as prohibited plantings. So that way, we can cover areas other than platted subdivisions.
Good.
Did Mr. Chairman, did you come to a conclusion about the banning of the sale by nurseries?
Yes, that was something that the Board of County Commissioners directed the legal, County Legal Department to evaluate. Florida statutes is pretty clear on the subject that the regulation of nurseries and the sale of plants are to be preempted to the state.
By the state, yeah.
They looked at it and the county actually worked very hard at trying to do something, but in all can of the state is a trump card.
Yep.
And we're, and we're working with the state and we anticipate by the end of the year, the 1st of January, that we may have that as an item already, so.
They just don't want to give up authority on--
The dilemma for everybody on greening is that it's, the psyllid is a small bug and these plants just harbor the, them, throughout their lifetime. And it's, it's not like in Canker where you remove a plant and then it doesn't spread. Greening, it's these psyllids flying, so they could be anywhere in the county. It's not like being near citrus or near agriculture matters. I mean, it's, unfortunately, we really need all of them gone because it harbors the psyllid, which is what, when it bites the plant, it spreads the bacteria to another plant. You don't know about it. So, you know, it's a tough life and we appreciate everybody's support.
What's been the response from, with Busy Bee, places like that? Have you received any, any responses from those groups?
I-- We haven't gotten any negative response taking it off of landscape lists. I mean, very rarely. I think there, I think there would be a concern if they couldn't, if they still have stock, have it in stock and want to sell it to, you know, homeowners. I don't know, George, if you spoke to anybody in the--
No, I haven't. When we found that the state preempted all regulation of nurseries, we did not contact any nurseries--
He still has his hair. He probably, if he was, if he was scalped, you'd have known he'd been out to talk to anybody about removing something for sale. Commerce, you know. We understand that. It's okay. We appreciate what we, what you all are doing.
I do have one point.
Okay.
George, you had said this was going to go into 926.05, but it states 926.05--
I'm sorry, it was going to go into 926.06.
Okay.
That's in the original backup and instead, we're going to go ahead and put it in 9.2605.
But your, the stuff you just gave us says 926.06.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, for anybody who-- For anybody who wanted to have someone come out and identify the plants in the yard, who would, who would we call to do that?
The extension-- The extension service.
Okay. Because I think a lot of people would try to be of help.
They're pretty well-known, I think.
Good.
All right, is there any other questions of our attorney or of anybody in the staff?
Pass the agenda.
If not, we'll, the public hearing is, anybody in the audience care to be heard? Here, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Gentlemen?
I'll make the motion to approve and it's going in 05.
It is. The old provision said that was going to go under Section 926.06, landscape material standards, sub-four, shrubs and hedges. The new language says it's going to go in 926.05. We're going to create sub-six, prohibited plantings.
I'll second.
We have a motion--
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Okay, great. Thank you all very much, we appreciate it. Citrus industry can make another month. Second item is consideration of proposed amendments on the, to the excavation of mining regulations, LDR Chapter 934, mines and agricultural areas. Brian?
Thank you. This is a, see, this is a proposal to amend Chapter 934 and actually, this is being done at the request of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And essentially, what this will do is codify what have recently become standards of approval for sand mines that are located in agricultural areas. And after the Planning and Zoning Commission requested staff to pursue this amendment, the staff took it to the Board of County Commissioners on July 24th and the board did direct staff to initiate the formal process. And essentially, the intent of these changes to the land development regulations are to provide the same level of protections for adjacent ranchet residential-type uses that are already provided to residentially zoned uses. And these would be for properties that are adjacent to mining operations. The first of these changes has to do with the landscape buffers that would be provided around a mining project site. And this would be wherever a mining project site abuts an agriculturally zoned parcel of 10 acres or less, which would be, it's your typical ranchet size parcel. And essentially, it puts in the same protection regarding a type-A buffer requirement that's already required for when a mining project abuts a residential zoning district. The second of the changes is similar in that it applies a standard which already applies for mining sites adjacent to residential zoning areas. That would, essentially, this would now be applied to mining sites that are adjacent to ranchet residential or agricultural zoned areas. And this limits the activity on the mining site to set from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM on weekdays. And additionally, there is a limitation that there would be no off-site hauling after 5:00 PM. And then the last two proposed amendments have to do with essentially the maintenance of unpaved roads that may be used as part of a mine's haul route. And the first one adds that, essentially, it adds the failure to maintain the unpaved hauling route per the approved plan as a reason for pulling a mine's compliance bond. There's a list of reasons already in Chapter 934. This adds that as a reason that a bond, compliance bond could be pulled. And then the other change has to do with the amount that is charged for a road maintenance bond for a mining project. And that increases the road maintenance bond amount from $2,000 per mile to $10,000 per mile. Staff's recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission is to recommend that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the proposed LDR amendments.
Thank you. Anybody got questions of the staff?
Yes.
Can I hear a yes?
Yes.
Craig, go ahead.
Surprise. We have the 7 to 6:00 PM on weekdays, which through the back door says no operation during weekends. Is that what we're--
Right.
Is that the intent?
Yes, and that would be only for mining projects that abut either residential zoning district or agricultural--
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure it was clear to me that that also included nothing on the weekends. Thank you.
George?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Jim Davis a question, if I could, through Bob.
Jim, come on up.
And this, I know, I do know I had a call that there's going to be another sand mine in an area where there are already a couple, out on 82nd. There's going to be an application soon, I believe. Jim, when you, you have standards for a non-paved road such as, let's just use 82nd, and it's got a sub-base, base, and the materials are set and standards are set, I assume by anticipated traffic in an area such as that? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. We have standards for unpaved roads, basically an eight-inch stabilized sub-base or base. And that's usually adequate for everyday traffic. But once a mining operation is introduced into the area and the frequency of heavy axle trucks use that road, particularly in the rainy season or in times of the year when the moisture content is either too low or too high, then the roads deteriorate quickly, even if it is up to county standards.
So if you get a large, a couple of, three large mining activities and you have a lot of truck traffic in the wet season, then the inspector goes out and checks that road. There's no, there's no increased types of materials that are used to maintain that road during that period of time. So the inspector goes out and determines whether the road is in acceptable shape and then the person or the company that's involved in the sand mining has to maintain that standard that's in this new requirement in reg.
Yeah, that's correct. But if you have two or three mines operating in the same area and they're all using the same road, many times, we end up in a finger-pointing situation whereby we have to get all the mining operators together and try to develop some maintenance routine that it's equitable for all three of them. And that's where lately, we've kind of gotten into some awkward positions, really.
So the, the permit could be pulled from any one of the three or four, whatever number of companies that are working a single road. The permit could be called, pulled if they're not maintaining the road to the level that's acceptable by your standards.
Yes.
It's not a person calling in and saying, "Look, I've gone down that road every day and it's washboard and I can't get through there five mile an hour." That's not the issue. It's the standard and the maintenance of the standards and the inspection that's done by the county.
Yes, but the two usually, the two usually coincide such that when we do get complaints, we do respond. And, you know, we try to make sure the road is in an acceptable condition, which would require more frequent maintenance or adding material, that's good material, much more frequently than the normal road that's not on a haul route.
I think, I mean, Greg, are you asking if there's a standard rather than an emotional move to fix the road? I mean, there is a, I assume they have a standard. You've got it. And that our new, our rule says they've got to meet that standard. I think his dilemma is going to be if we have two or three mines, when they get into finger-pointing, how you divide that up and, you know, hopefully 82nd will get paved pretty quick and we won't have that problem, but--
Well, didn't that fall under the code enforcement agency? I mean, the agency that activates that? You get a report in, code enforcement goes look at it, or do you--
Code enforcement usually calls us and we respond.
Okay.
And we, you know, we get involved in the mining permit condition, which either, you know, requires the mine, mining operator to maintain the haul route, or if they don't, we can pull this bond that's being increased.
So you have the authority to pull the issue, not the code enforcement?
I think the dilemma's sorting it out.
Yeah, that's--
And I don't know what they're going to do about that.
That's why they get paid so much.
Well, is that, Jim, isn't that based on the number of trips? If group A is going 50 times a day and group B is going 30 times a day, that's basically, you've got a ratio there for maintenance based on some, on trips?
What you would think.
Or weight?
Both. You know, the type of truck makes a difference, the frequency makes a difference. And it's difficult, you know. We don't have someone there 24 hours a day counting every truck, looking at labels, you know. Many of these manning operators, they contract the trucking out to various entities. So we could have, you know, two or three mans operating, but five or six trucking companies operating. So it gets to be an interesting--
You hold three compliance agreements in your hand and you say, "We're going to take all these at one time." Guess what? I imagine they'll find a way to fix that road.
Yeah. And that happened just yesterday.
It's like Solomon cutting the baby, you know. They'll do something.
Right. Where did that happen? That happened yesterday on 82nd Avenue.
Okay. And now you're going to have another one on 82nd. So there's a proposal, a request for another one there. And the road, the paving, we're talking a long time before the paving is going to occur.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's years off.
It's been rumored for a while.
Six or 10 years.
Any other, any other comments? I'm sorry, Bob.
I was just going to say, regarding the paving of 82nd Avenue, that's a project that's on the MPO's priority list to use federal funds in doing that. And we're right now finishing up the second of four phases that get a road construction, constructed. The federal government paid for the PDNE, which is the project development and environmental study that was done a couple of years ago. Design is almost complete, but then we have to hope that right-of-way in construction phases get funded expeditiously. I'd say it's probably going to be about 10 years before it's--
It's still the MPO's fault. It's real--
Yeah, it's a 13-year cycle from when it gets on the list, I think, isn't it, Bob?
Something like that.
That's best case.
That's best case scenario.
If money's available and money's not available these days.
Any other comments about the reg, excuse me?
Brian, what are the hours of operation when a mine is not next to one of these properties that this LDR addresses?
Well, there are no limitations for a mining project site that's not adjacent to a residential zone or ranchet parcels as is proposed. The Planning and Zoning Commission does have the ability to put limits on the hours of operation as part of the administrative permit approval that each mining site has to obtain.
Is there any, does anybody up here feel that we should do that?
They, we do that a lot, but part of the reason these rules came back up is these are the, these are the hot points that seem to come up on almost every sand mine, so it kind of codifies them ahead of time. The key on the second, on the third part, or the second part, on the 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM operation had more to do with the employees being active on the job site. The neighborhood complaints usually relate or revolve around truck traffic, which has been limited at five o'clock. So seven to six is a little deceiving. It's really seven to five. And you do still have, it's an administrative permit, so you can still--
You can massage it.
--can come up, but this at least tells everybody ahead of time, these are the minimums. If we need more, we can deal with it later. But it's, I think that in the long run, this looks to me like what we have attached to many sand mines.
Okay. I think the, I think it's good reg. I think the problem that we're going to find in the future is that the sand mines are located, usually they're isolated, pretty well-isolated. They're not really near that many ranchets or homes. But in some cases, you know, you've got a lot of homes at near Road 60, you've got a lot of homes in major development on 69th, places like that. And those trucks have to go by those places also, so you've got an enormous extension of the damage that can occur to the road because you've got the sand mines pretty close, but they've got to go a long way to get on that paved road.
And you're going to get close because of the lake effect and lots being sold around on New Lake. Yeah.
I mean, typically, a sand mine is put in because eventually, they're going to turn it into some kind of residential development and the mine is going to be used--
Waterfront property.
--as an amenity. So--
Yeah, that's, it's a trade-off. But this is a good, I think, personally, I think this is a good base.
Yeah.
Any other comments? If not, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody out there want to speak? Hearing none, I close the public hearing. I need a motion--
Move to adopt as, as presented?
I'll second.
Craig, Fletcher, and Bob, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Passes unanimously? Thank you. I'll pass it back to Bob. I've done my two little near and dearest to my heart things tonight.
Okay, Commissioner Matters, does anybody have anything they wish to speak about?
I have an issue. I asked Mr. Keating to, to make a copy of a letter or a document, I guess, that was presented at the St. John's River Water Management District on September 11th by one of the commissioners, Ann Moore. And she was addressing some of the issues that are occurring between the Corrigan and the St. John's Land Exchange. And I thought she did a real nice job in bringing up some of the issues that affect the local community. And if you've got that on, she, she had four points, but I think the point three and point four are really the ones that I wanted everybody sort of to be aware of. And she brings up, the problem, I think, with, that was occurring in this particular deal is that there was very little input from the local community by St. John's--
You understand it was not, you understand it was not bought for conservation purposes by St. John's. We, the county, changed it to conservation land on our own without their permission or request.
It was bought with preservation 2,000 funds, which are conservation funds.
Actually, in addition to that, the statute, 4 statutes 373, say any lands purchased prior to July 1, 1999 is presumed to be held in conservation. So, so under a state statute, 373 and state statute, I think it's 253, the one with P2,000, it's deemed to have been purchased for conservation purposes.
And she brings out the point that once, if they decide to exchange the land to a private developer, that the local government really doesn't have any opportunity to step in and, and purchase the-- in and purchase the land itself. And this particular piece, the sand lakes piece, was on the lack list to be purchased. And I think there was anticipation by the county at that time that we would be sharing in it, in the purchase of it. So I just thought that, I think, this affected Indian River County pretty strongly. And maybe we could advise or make a suggestions to the county commission that they could write to our representatives and also to the governor to not necessarily be involved in this case, because I know they're filing an appeal. But in the future, there ought to be some way of recognizing the needs of the local government. I mean, we're here on the Planning and Zoning Commission and we're sort of planning on how the development's going to occur in our county. And certain areas do get designated as conservation. And then to have a higher power or without really any exchange of information between the state and the county, I see where it'd be difficult to predict in the future what's going to be happening. And so I think there needs to be some mechanism for solving this particular problem. So I'd like to make a recommendation at some point that we suggest to the, make a motion to the, that the county commission address this issue by asking our representatives and the governor to see if they could get this changed somewhere so that there would be some mechanism for the county to have some input if conservation lands are going to be exchanged to a private developer or a private entity.
The only thing, only comment I would have with that is I would agree with what Dr. Baker says. But in my, only thing that has always bothered me about this and the timing is that provided the owner of the land has agreed in writing to the change in zoning. And in this case, that did not happen. The owner of the land was St. John's Water Management District. We changed it to conservation land. And I don't want to fight this fight tonight because I believe in conservation rights. I believe in conservation land. I really do. But there are a lot of things that this county could do with development rights, et cetera, to help move this down the road as one package. And I think that it's a broader picture than what we tend to focus on right now. But the fact is, is that land, it's not a problem. If this county has changed land to conservation land and the owner has agreed and wanted it to be conservation land, I am 100% behind Dr. Baker. But if we do it and take it away from somebody, make it conservation land, and they didn't agree, then I think that fight should be fought then. St. John's didn't take that issue. They let it happen and that was fine. But the fact is, is they'd had that land in their mine for a long time for another use.
But I think if you go back to what George Glenn just said, that it was by default conservation land.
See, if St. John's tells me that, I'll agree with you.
Well, the state is saying that.
St. John's has conceded that, as Dr. Baker pointed out, the county's appealing their decision to the governor and cabinet sitting in their position as the Florida Land and Water Judicatory Commission. They've conceded that the land has been purchased for conservation purposes, has been dictated by four statutes, both 373.
I guess arguably, they said they used it for that because they used it in a swap that gained three times or two times or four times the amount of conservation land out of it. So it's in the governor's hands. And if you all want to make a motion tonight, it's fine. But I, it's the, this is a sensitive issue with me only because of the fact, the background of it. Not trying to oppose conservation land at all. I implore it 100%.
Richard, would you like to make a motion?
Go ahead.
I thought I did.
Okay. Can you restate your motion? I'm sorry, Bob.
Actually, that's what I was going to do, try to clarify Dr. Baker's motion. As I understand it, it's really pretty limited, that you are making a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends the Board of County Commissioners ask our legislative delegation to initiate legislation at the state level to require the Water Management District or other entity that owns conservation land to give the local government first right of refusal to purchase it in a case that they're surplusing it or looking at trading it or in some other way disposing a property. Is that correct?
That's correct. Very well-stated. Thank you.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay.
Discussion?
Who's that?
Discussion.
Greg, second.
Greg.
I had, you know, in the fact case, something like that. And now that it's been better explained probably, and I wasn't listening clear, I don't have a problem with that at all. The St. Water Management Districts can be asked to give the county first right of refusal on anything.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Any other Commissioner Matters?
County has to be.
Planning Matters.
Can I go ahead? Sure. Comment, Bob? This is hindsight, of course, but I still want to say something about it. In this, in what we just talked about, and St. John's making this trade and paying for property, et cetera. And I tried to stay very up on it as far as reading was concerned and listening to people that were commenting on it. And the thing that I don't understand from the St. John's point of view is that they are making this trade, in essence, property for property, and then are going to pay for additional. Had they explained why they thought the property that they were getting was so valuable as far as water use was concerned and biologically, I think it would have gone a long way in making it more platable to people. But I fail to understand, or have ever read, that caused me to understand the reason for the amounts of land involved and the positions of the property involved and how it came to be that valuable for the St. John's. That's what I would like to have known. And I think that would really help people in understanding what their issue was, at least.
Richard, you're pretty close to this. Do you have an explanation for that?
Well, I don't think they, the rationale for it kind of evolved, I would say. And when they first came down and presented to the lack committee, I think Mr. Christensen was quite surprised that we were concerned about the issue. And he really didn't go into the justification, although the committee was, I think, pretty strong opposed to it. And when he came down to the Board of County Commissioners and spoke, he had another little, a different sort of explanation for it. And then it's kind of evolved after that. They discovered that there was some scrub lands there. And so then they made a third change in the exchange. They put a conservation value on part of it. But that was sort of, again, after they had proposed the deal to the lack. So I think they were trying to justify the trade. And they're trying to not indicate that it was the lawsuit that was driving it so much. But when it first came out, it was the lawsuit was the reason they were doing this.
Well, that's amazing to me because I, you know, I don't mean to throw taxpayers' money around. That's not what I mean. But when somebody threatens with a lawsuit, you know, both sides have attorneys. And I don't understand how the threat of a lawsuit can have that much weight.
Depends on whether you're elected or not. See, then you get into politics. Okay. Any other Commissioner Matters? Planning Matters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick matters. One, I already reported to you all at the last meeting, just as a reminder, there was an appeal filed by Bob Adair on behalf of the Research Center for the St. Augustine preliminary plat approval that you all approved with conditions. And that is scheduled for October 2nd, the next board meeting. So you may be reading about that. There was a bit of time between the appeal and putting it on the board, and Mr. Adair agreed to that. We wanted to try to give a few weeks to see if the developer, Mr. Adair, could get together and work out some kind of buffering. You might recall, there was a bit of that attempt during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, but that apparently has not borne any fruits. So the appeal is going forward on October 2nd. And the other, just kind of an observation, I think these microphones are a little tricky to use, but what we've been advised is you're supposed to be about 18 inches to 12 inches away from it.
That far?
And it's kind of difficult to know what you sound like. So it's, a lot of times, people are getting up into it and getting garbled. So I just wanted to just ask you to maybe play with it a little bit, you know? See if, see how it works. But I think 12 to 18 inches is what's been recommended.
You can tell how old somebody is by how close they get to the mic.
What'd you say?
Yeah.
It works for me when the telephone, you know, long distance, the louder I get, I'm sure it works better.
Okay. Next item is attorneys' matters. Do you have anything, George?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. And I'm hoping this is about 12 to 18 inches. Sort of going back to the St. Augustine plat approval process, I brought up a provision in the code, 913074H2, which relates to the review of preliminary plats. And I noted that the provision stated that the approving body may attach conditions to the application, which relates to Indian River County land development regulations and affected project, the project will have on the community and are necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the county. Subsequently, I came back with a memorandum explaining that the exercise of that provision is somewhat suspect, that the Supreme Court has stated that a local government agency may deny a plat application only if the agency demonstrates that applicant failed to meet objective legal requirements for approval. I was requested at the previous meeting to do some more research into this. And I submitted basically the same memorandum I had before, but I included additional court language phrases that I thought might help clarify the issue. And I think what we see is the courts are pretty clear that it's got to be objective criteria. You can't have just blanket discretion to add conditions on at the last second. Approval.
You're going to have to tell Donna that yourself on your own.
This is a perfect opportunity.
You're on your own on this ground.
This is a perfect opportunity to say it now while Donna's gone. And then we won't have to bring it up again. But anyway, so the memorandum, it just includes some additional language that I've gone from different court cases that speak to the issue. And I think it sort of clarifies that when going through the plat process, we really need to look to clearly stated regulations, objective regulations, and in proving or denying the plat application. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Question on that, Mr. Chairman, if I might. The question I had when I had this before was, do you think we need to remove the statement where it says, "Protect the health, welfare, and safety of the Indian River County residents"? Do you think we need to remove that or reword it or?
Well, my understanding of the, it might, that's a good question.
Is it too vague?
It, well, it's vague, but from my understanding, from where it might become useful is in the PD process.
Right.
PD process where it requires an applicant to follow both the plat rules and the site plan rules. And there's more of a horse trade in that.
Much more subjective, right?
It's much more subjective. And so that, this type of language might be applicable for a PD coming forward. But that's something we can look into. I'm sure our code and any code out there, even the Florida statutes have provisions that probably are not constitutional and.
Well, I've seen this health, welfare, and safety, health, safety, and welfare of residents on every document in the entire, since I can remember, you know? That's the prime directive of all officials, elected or otherwise, is to protect the health. So I don't see how we can get rid of it, but it is subjective, I understand.
And usually, that type of language is associated with the power of a legislative function to pass legislative actions. And the problem, though, is when you're looking at the approval of a plat or site plan, you're getting into quasi-digital.
It's non-legislative.
Exactly. So that language is typically used to justify legislative action, which of course is very wrong.
At this level, it's very subjective. A big leftover to the county commission, right?
Exactly.
That would be the legislative act.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, well, you know, and like, but we've had a couple of legislative actions tonight that you voted on. So, you know, that would be applicable to those situations as well.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Richard.